There's Dr. Here showing on the first page of the what's the modification to section 1147.05 of the ordinance for planning and zoning code. So, is there any questions with what is here?
You might want to review what the changes are that you were talking about.
Sure. Changes we're showing that the major change is that we are having a sign that for an applicant or asking for a variance or an appeal, they have to obtain a sign for a fee of $10 from the city. It has to be placed on their property within 10 feet of the public right of way. And it has to be in there on that property for 14 days. And if it's not, the board zoning appeals can cancel the applicant and they have to reapply. And it's stating about which we haven't changed. We still have a newspaper circulation. But the added things are that we're wanting to put in notification on the city's public website. And basically, the differences that we've added, correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Secretary.
Uh, no, but yeah, it sounds like you've got pretty much all the changes that we were talking about.
It does still keep it in the 200, only 200 feet of the contiguous to the property.
Just curious where the $25 for a second or law sign came from. Is there a reason for that being higher than the $10 for the initial one, or?
Well, there's too many.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, really, the number you want could be, you know, whatever you want.
I'm just, you know, thinking that.
I just think they should be the same for the second sign, the last one.
But, you know, at $10, you're going to cover the cost of the sign twice. So, I guess my question is, I'd rather see it be more fair and equitable. If we think that $10 is the cost, I think for the second or place, it's actually equal to say.
Any, if, don't hesitate, anybody have any comments?
I'm not part of committee, but I will interject that Mr. Miller, when he was here the last time and spoke about this, said that he would have liked to see possibly the extension of that 200 foot, maybe to at least another hundred foot possibly or so, so.
Could I?
Yeah, please.
In looking at that, if we do go to 300 feet, which we had talked about and seen that, which wasn't a part of the BZA's resolution, was we wanted to keep it at that 200. He would be outside of that 300 feet for the property that is in question anyway. So, we would have to bump that to 400 before he would have been picked up by the project on the corner of Curse Deter and Arrowhead.
So, if we would even do like 400 feet, like we're doing a public hearing for Southern, Poplar and Walnut, that'd go quite a ways. And that'd be, which they are, anybody's, it's still a public hearing, anybody can come.
Right, and the sign gets the, gets the word out there. The other thing that was raised was maybe a minimum number of
Sign?
Of properties to be mailed to. And I thought everyone could say 10, but, you know, 10 goes out almost every time. 10 went out for the one on the corner of Curse Deter and Arrowhead. 11 went out for the one on the corner of Arrowhead, or I'm sorry, Curse Deter and Southern. So, I think the sign takes care of.
I'm going to agree with you, I think that whatever number, if you increase that number to 200, 300, 400, someone's going to live on the other side of that and not be happy with it. And I think that 200, there's a reason that 200 was initially chosen. I think in the day and age of the internet, the day and age of, you know, other ways to get things out, I think the sign is going to alleviate a majority of the issue.
To reiterate, we're not out of step with communities of our size by any means. There were some that had 300, there were some that had 100, there were some that only had directly contiguous or contiguous properties and directly across the street. But in the spirit of the NCA tournament kicking off, teams 69, 70, 71 and 72, they all think they should be in the tournament. If we expand to 72, then 73, so exactly.
Agreed.
It makes a difference as to what part of town you're in, the 200 feet. In the older parts sections of town where the homes are so much closer together, it's going to get probably more than if you're out in fringes of town where they're a lot further apart. So, it sort of seems like a medium road here to.
In the older, more developed parts, we can see 20, 25 letters going out easily. And for instance, in these cases, in the R1 districts, for example, where they're, you know, wider yards and that type of thing, yeah, we might only get to 10 or 12 that we pick out in that 200 foot radius.
But I think the sign itself out in that yard, especially on, depending on what street they're on, like the Curse Deter one, that would have been there. Everybody driving by on Curse Deter would have seen that. And well, on anybody on most streets, I mean, there's some streets here in town that not many of us who drive down, like Aines is a short street, not many people are going to see the sign there. But still, this would get it out, and also, they will, correct me if I'm wrong, is it also, it's automatically going to be posted on the city's website, all potential public hearings?
I think the idea there is we'll have a link on our website that they can visit. That link will take them, we're going to be posting them on our social media pages. So, that link will take them to the social media page where they can see, my, at least my intention is, Mark, you know, I put together a map that typically shows what the variance they're requesting kind of looks like from an aerial view. My intention is to have both the application and the request map available on the social media page.
Do we need to designate that the sign will be in a certain color, or it'll be bright or visible, or do we just need to you to come up with one?
We kind of pulled some pictures for some, some other communities, and they were essentially white with some kind of red or blue kind of letter.
I saw the Delaware County over the weekend.
Yeah.
It was blue with white letters.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I almost thought, I'd like to see something more.
Yeah, I think we were looking at white with probably red lettering or something. Because then when you write up, if it's white with red lettering and you fill in the blanks with the black, it's going to stand out pretty good, it'll be pretty visible.
But as long as it's quite visible, I don't have a problem with that. Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Could I real quick?
Yeah.
For the, making sure that the sign is visible as it's posted, is, I mean, should I drive by? I mean, what's the protocol going to be there? I guess what's the definition of it being posted where it's visible?
Well, and the definition is clearly visible, and that's, that's kind of a reasonable person standard. So, yeah, it'll be on the city, the police app, kind of to verify that the sign is placed. Which, when I say city, I mean you.
Yes.
More of the board members are out looking at the, looking at the property and they have a replacement that they could let me know.
Yeah, and all, that's one thing, because all the board members, pretty much all, if you drive bys on all these people.
Could we grant authority to the zoning administrator to actually place the sign and choose the placement of the sign? And that way, the homeowner wouldn't even leave it where it's placed and not move it because they didn't like where it was?
Yeah, you definitely have that.
I mean, that, if you give that responsibility to somebody, I don't care who it is, but if he doesn't leave that to somebody, now everybody knows that's the guy that has the right to put it where he wants it and not move it.
I think that may be the idea.
So, we'll just add that to section C, so the sign should be posted in a location should be posted by the city zoning officer.
It may not be moved.
Would you have to put it or his agent or something like that?
Yeah.
In case he's on vacation.
You say not moved, I think about like mowing yards and things like that.
Well, meaning not moved, it needs to be, you can't move it 20 feet over here, or you can, you know, pick it up and mow.
It's only 14 days.
That was, actually, my other question is, is this 14 days going to be longer?
I think so.
Otherwise, the zoning officer will be long. So, section C, I'll modify to include that it'll be placed by the zoning officer and his agent. And then in paragraph three, I'll add the applicant or property that moves, removes, potentially larger obscure. So, we'll have that additional movement there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Are you also adding in section two A, the last line, said $25, $10 to 20?
Yeah. Are there any other questions? Thomas? Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion. Okay, motion by my side. I'll say it, it's under my panel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right. There's nothing else at this time? We set at 6:12.
Call health and safety, order at 6:12. First item up is the car show street closures and, yeah, before your letter, dated March 14th, Besire City Council, Besire's Lodge Number 68 for Toronto Order Place Incorporated respectfully request permission to close the following streets on Saturday, June 8, 2019, for the creation of the cops custom and custom car show. We would like to close the 100 block of East Warren Street from 7 a.m. until 12 p.m. at night for the food courts, and Sutsky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakland Avenue from 12 p.m. until 12 a.m. at night. We would also like to close Washington Square, the 100 blocks of East and West Mansfield Street, the 100 block of West Warren Street, 100 blocks of East and West Rensselaer Street, and 100 block of East and West Charles Street from 12 p.m. until 12 a.m. midnight. Your attention and support of this matter would be greatly appreciated as this is a great event for our city. Respectfully, Tracy Keegan, Treasurer, FOP Lodge 68. You'll see that it's pretty much the same as it had been in the past.
So, I make a motion to approve.
I guess I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the, where is it that they hand out the trophies? Now, did they do it?
We've done that on the front steps of St. Paul's, the last time we were here.
I do that, then they plan on keeping it there, they're not going to do it in, in Shines Park or anything like that.
Do you have any knowledge of that?
I have no idea, honestly.
Okay.
I don't know that that would matter, because the court's going to be right there. So, that street's going to be closed a little bit longer.
Okay.
So, I think we'd be fine, either way. Any other questions or discussion?
I made a motion to approve this for the speaker.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Now, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Second item up is fire department equipment. And I'm going to turn that over to Captain Schwimley to address the committee.
Okay, well, I guess starting off, I guess, I don't know if everybody knows, the fire we had on Tuesday, we had an equipment failure of, of the one truck, of engine three, which to get, which delayed us a little bit to put, be able to put water on the fire. We had to, I had to stick the one firefighter in the truck and he had to manually run the throttle with his foot to get us, be able to pump water. The electronic control was one of those that if anybody remembers from when we, in budgeting, and we stopped talking about that, it is one of those obsolete parts that they may or may not be able to fix. Regardless of sending it in, and when, once I pulled off, if I pulled off the truck to send it in to see, the truck would be out of service. And that was one of those things that we didn't want to happen. Later on in the day, we were able to shut the truck completely down and it, it did reactivate. I'm going to, tomorrow, I'm going to go over the electrical system on, of that controller and see, just double checking inputs and everything else. But my knowledge of how, of how it works, there were other lights to, on the display of it that were lit, and it only has one power source, so I know it was, it was giving power. But it's not something that we've ever experienced before with, with that system. I, we had, Kevin had requested that, you know, be here to, to address that with you. I do have a, made a phone call, I do have a demo coming to the station on Tuesday at, at least 1 o'clock. The, those demo units, from what you told me, were running from low 400s to just under 500,000. The production of a truck right now from, from this particular company, which was suffering, is 11 to 13 months out from the time that you place the, place an order. He does have, they do have a couple others that are of demos that are in, in the production line, could possibly get sooner than that. But, you know, that's, that's just with one company, you know, that was, that was one of my contacts that was just a phone call away. We still are in the, in running for the grant, through the FEMA grant. But there's no guarantees on that, I was just saying, we have not received a rejection letter on it yet.
We still have one out there.
Yes, yeah, the first round of mine. We can proceed with getting specs, and we were working on that. We've just, as I know, we've, we've just finally finalized most of the stuff with the SCBA grant that we, you know, received back last year. So, we're, we're working on a truck spec, but, you know, if we've got to speed things up, you know, we obviously may not get exactly what we want.
When do they expect to, five weeks on the grant?
They were trying to speed those up, they were, they weren't wanting to drill it out as long as, as what they did last year. We think by June, they should be here. And part of the reason that I asked Captain Sherman to come was mainly to, I was down there and learned of this at the time. And I had asked him to come and share it with everybody, just so that we knew what was going on. And I know we talked about it in budgeting, so I also wanted to see if, you know, as long as they don't sign a contract for purchase, if we are ordered to grant, that's how it'll be paid for. But we've already established that we've got, you know, some in the, in the former fire levy fund to cover our first year's payment, which wouldn't happen until next year anyway. And so, I wanted to see if we could go ahead and get the ball rolling with them and let them start working on their specs now. As long as they haven't signed an agreement, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot at all, as far as whether we do or don't get the grant. And I think, you know, like he alluded to, we had, you know, an instance where luckily, nobody was injured or killed, but could have been because of the failure of the truck and the inability to put water in the fire. And with this piece, not knowing if it's going to function properly again in the future, we're only now one more failure away from potentially not having any new good working frontline fire at this. And so, I think that we are to a point now where we've got to speed up the process. I totally understand waiting to make sure that we're going to get the grant, because that's free money. We all need and want that. But I think we also have to be prepared that if we don't get that, we still want to be moving forward at a pace to get this equipment into these guys' hands as quick as possible.
Do we, do we need to repair what we have in the meantime?
It's unrepairable, parts are no longer made.
Okay, that's how we use that.
Yeah, there, I can, I can take the part off and send it in, and they said there's, when I, when I contacted them, there was no guarantees that they can, can.
Yeah, they think it's old, or whatever, they can do, essentially, what it is, yeah.
Yeah, because it's obsolete.
So, what do we, what do we do in the meantime?
As he alluded to, there, we have the, a couple different options, you know. We know that both of those trucks are going to need to replace, but we don't want to replace them at the same time. Our hope was to get a new one next year and then nurse those two along for another five years. So, but what, one of the things we can do, you'd asked previously about a lease, we could, we could do a short-term lease to get us through until one that we order comes in. We could go ahead and be prepared to order one, or as he said, they're going to bring a few specs for us to look at. We could purchase a spec truck, it's not going to be 100% what they might have envisioned, but if it's something that will work for them, that's a consideration. So, we've got a couple different options, but I think we just need to get the ball rolling on these guys so that they can have the right equipment to do their job.
Mr. Chairman, sir, how much, how much is the lease possibility? And what type of equipment would it be?
Um, we really haven't ever checked into a short-term lease with me, because generally what we were looking at was, those were, I think they were, they're, what did we look at?
Fifteen a year, I think is what we, what I brought back to finance earlier, you know, during budget.
A shorter term lease is probably going to be a spec vehicle anyway, and it's going to be a higher price because, you know, we're, we're done with it after. Because those were three years. Yeah, because it's generally, generally what you're set up is it's a, it's a lease to own, is, is what the, one of those lease contracts are.
Okay, I was just curious, do you have an idea how much?
On.
Per, per year, per what?
Well, like, somewhere between four and then $700,000. And that could be spaced out over a 20-year or 10-year payment. I'm a fan of spaced out over the 20 and paying ahead if we can, you know, but not being held to it, if we don't have to. But that's for, you know, financing, for your ways to figure out what's going to, I don't know, if the interest rates change when you take it out longer, not, not into that, but.
I was just curious about, roughly, what the dollar per year is. Is there a possibility of ever looking for a used one? With maybe 10 years old or eight years old?
I, I would object strongly to that, because, you know, you're getting something used versus, you know.
Well, there's quite a few communities that might get rid of a nice truck that are well off and can replace them every five or eight years. I'm just looking at our budget for general fund, that's all.
Yeah, I, I, I think that for a pickup truck or a lawnmower or something, I'm, I'm absolutely favored that for a fire truck. I would object to that, just because I am not trying to get something that we know works and, you know. You don't know if a community, you know, the truck, because they have problems with them. And in this instance, we're talking about getting a life-saving piece open, but I think it's important that we can just figure out how we're going to afford it to get one that's due, that comes with a warranty and that we, we know the entire district has.
Captain, what was the age of the unit?
They're 21 years old.
Yeah, this one was 21.
Yeah. They're both, yeah, they're both, yes.
National Fire Protection Association standards say that you should not use a frontline engine that's over 20 years.
And this is just regarding general information, per today, can you just kind of address then, how would that unit be in down, kind of what our level of preparedness is right now if there were to be, you know, a fire or more than one fire, or a larger fire going on in the city?
Well, we still, I mean, like I said, we've still got engine two, and we've got the land traffic. And obviously, we, we still rely on mutual aid.
Yeah. And engine one, 50?
Yeah, which.
It's a 19, what, 1989 or 90?
89, yeah, 89. And more or less to, to try to put that, to set that up to be a frontline piece is, we can't do our job what we do today. I mean, it's, there's no, there's no storage, there's no, that's firefighting back. It'd be like getting the old steamer out more or less, because it's, it's ancient.
The old pump, right?
And I think ultimately, I don't think this committee, you know, is able to do anything other than just show our support. I think that really, you guys certainly give them the go-ahead to start looking.
We'll have to look at everything, you know, and because it's got to be paid for. You know, we're not saying we don't need it, it's just, one of the best options, we'll explore how it relates to the grant, we'll explore leasing versus purchasing, long-term, sure to like you, but you've covered everything.
Yeah.
So, I think what the best thing to do, I think, is start researching and lay it out for all you guys in the finance committee and see what we can do.
Absolutely, yeah. I guess we're just looking for your support for them, to let them get moving and maybe just take it up a few notches and then.
Well, we, you know, we've known that they're 21 years old, and that's why we were trying to get this grant, you know, fast forward, so hopefully.
I just had a quick question, you said that the company do, coming in with the demo was suffering. Is there any other companies that?
Yeah, we, we've been looking at several different companies.
I didn't know if they were your, like, your preferred company to deal with, or if there's.
Um, actually, Besire's has never owned a suffering. Uh, Dallian has, has had suffering for many, many years. They're just, you know, they're just down in, in Dublin.
Yeah.
I've got another sales rep that, that handles, I've been in talks with several different ones. There's Seagrave, there's Alexis.
Pierce.
Uh, Pierce, you know, we, we, and this, we have a lot more options for apparatus than we did SCBA. So, we've, we've got a lot more choices for, for something like that.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's, just give us as many options as possible, so we're seeing all the, all the options.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Any other information or any other questions or thing on that topic?
How much of a timeframe do you want to lay them?
Well, I think, yeah, I think he's. Simply, I'm going to, I will keep, sorry, I'll keep the administration and council abreast of what, what I find on the, on that control bed, because that's, that is the main key on, on what happens.
Right, right. But we still have to, still belong, even though we try to get it fixed. Thanks, Senator Homewood. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Sir? Quick question. If the control unit is removed and sent to see if it can be repaired, will the pumper truck still be able to be used with a person operating the throttle to keep the?
That is not a safe practice at all.
I know it's not a safe practice, but any pinch, could that be done?
Um, we would be more, we'd be more likely to rely on a mutual aid company than to that. That is, that was just a last resort effort until I could get another engine on its scene.
All right, we will move on to our next item, which is Darrell's Properties, Mr. Radler.
I had Mr. Dil provide you copies of all the various assorted ordinances that have been proposed over the years, vacant buildings to, rural properties to occupancies, we can see that's all of that. Did you, did you, is that article?
I replied this one. Was that this?
Yeah.
Was that the Sutsky?
Yeah.
I was sure it was.
Okay. Fast, I guess, or two, I guess. You just want, that's an article from Sutsky, from, they adopted one six years ago. Yeah, they, they adopted one six years ago, and that's an article from two years ago. It'll just show the impact was on, in their community, so.
One of the things, and it, it doesn't so much affect health and safety for, for this, but one of the things, a couple of us were at the housing study meeting the other day. And a question was asked, well, how many rental properties do we currently have? And I said, well, it's tough in our community to know, because we don't have any type of registration to know which ones are rentals and which ones are, are other occupied.
We don't, we don't have any way to, to track that. Similarly, we have a lot, a lot of people who are quote-unquote purchasing properties through land contract. But very, very frequently, you find that those are unrecorded land contracts, which isn't really a land contract. So, you know, we, we, we just don't have any way to really track that or know what the, the numbers are.
And I think they made it clear in the meeting the other day that those, that's the kind of information. I think you, you all heard about this housing study that we're going to reauthorize this towards the end of the year last year, and for us to become a part of it along with Dallian and with. and for us to become a part of it along with Dalian and with Crestline to be able to identify, not only identify for us, but to have it in a format and in a, a document that anyone who would be interested in any kind of, uh, coming into our community to provide more housing and show what areas we actually need new housing in. Uh, whether it be for seniors, whether it would be for, uh, the upper wage earners, the middle class, the lower classes. The, uh, the one point that he kept seeming coming around too, and, uh, and I think struck home with a lot of us was the fact that, uh, we, we see people as, as young people as they come out of school, get a job and making their first entrance out into, uh, their own little world that they're starting to build is that there, how many places are available at that level? But then two or three years down the road after they've progressed in their job, they're looking to make another step up to maybe get something a little bit bigger, a little bit nicer, a little bit, you know, more to their lifestyle that they want. Is that available in our community? And then finally with some first-time homebuyers that want to start a family, uh, that are looking for something else that's a step up. I think most of us did that gradual progression. I know I did over the years as to where I was living. And they're going to identify the demographics of those, those groups. And so the, uh, any, anyone that we could get, uh, of, of someone who's a, has a company that wants to get involved in that and they're out there looking for ways to spend their money. I think that between that and the banking industry was also brought up as we need to work with our local bankers to see that we're financing in the city what people want. And so they gave a lot of guidelines, but they're going to expand on all of that once they, they get a look at this. But in order to do that, you've got to know what you have now. And that's what this study's all about and that's why, uh, some of these things that we're talking about here tonight have come before us is because this can help provide that information.
One question I have for Mr. Rappel that came up, I know in the insurance industry, we look at thirty days of vacancy. It's not considered vacant. What have you found in reviewing other state ordinances or what are your thoughts? And when does something be vacant?
They, they have a variety of, of conditions and different ordinances have different levels of condition. And they also will exempt certain properties, you know, that, you know, perhaps are in sale, sale or transition. But just this one, the evidence of vacancy is any condition that on its own or combined with other conditions present would need a reasonable person to believe the property is vacant. Such conditions include but are not limited to low-stated utility usage or no utilities, overgrown or dead vegetation, accumulation of newspapers, circular flyers in their mail, accumulation of trash dumped in their breeding, open or worn-out windows, abandoned vehicles, absence of window coverings, uh, absence of windows, um, foreclosures, uh, you know, that's, that's another one. Tax foreclosure, share, sale notices and all those sort of things that play into that, that determination.
You know, I know this has been a touchy subject. I've spoke with some, some property owners that are against this and I can appreciate their position as well. So I want to make sure that as we're looking at this, we can be objective and we can be fair and equitable to understand there's a reason that we want this, that we need to find that, that balance to where we're not penalizing the people that have it along. And that's one of the questions I wanted to ask was about the, you know, if I've got somebody who owns a property and their tenant has moved out and damaged the property, they're taking sixty days to rehabilitate it to get ready for the next guy that will have it. I don't want to see us penalizing that guy for doing the right thing.
Certainly, that's clearly not, not, I don't think anything is contemplated by the, by the ordinances or any of the ordinances here. I think what, what these ordinances try to do is, is a couple of things. One, identify ownership on these, you know, the, the out-of-state, out-of-time banks or the mortgage companies or the property maintenance companies that hold these and sometimes for years. For example, we're dealing with, with one up on, on Woodrow Avenue right now. It's been abandoned for five years and the property maintenance company from Texas, um, is telling the bank in California that, oh no, it's got new roofing, new plumbing and like, I don't, we were out there when they put the new roof on and the underboards were so rotted, they had to glue the sheaves on. So, you know, those are one of the issues and, and those banks don't have to currently register. Um, the other is, is safety forces and just the safety of our, our individuals. Building was torn down on West Mansfield Street. When you looked in the first floor windows, what you thought was the first floor was actually the ceiling of the second floor because the first floor was down in basement. So having those things registered, knowing what the conditions are, knowing whether there's, you know, the roof is okay or the, there's a floor or not, uh, and making sure that those buildings are maintained in such a way as to not create a nuisance are, are key components of this. We have a vacant building over on Spring and Galen and I know right now the, it's got one of those exterior basement doors. It's got those exterior basement doors that, you know, the old Wizard Boss kind of doors where you kind of stand it wide open. Uh, the back door, stand it wide open. The burned-out building, I called the owner's attorney, let them know, you've got to get it secured. It's been forty-eight hours, it still hasn't secured. We're going to have to get a deal with that tomorrow. Our people are going to have to get a deal with that. And, you know, we'll assess that, will we ever recover it? No. But, you know, that's, that's kind of the way that works. I think one of the key components that a vacant building ordinance does from my point of view is it shifts the burden of the cost of these vacant buildings from the city, from the neighborhoods to the people that are holding it. And one of the things that we struggle with and we, we, we have the situation in court today. We have, we have two structures that we've dealt with for four or five years now. The people that live at these, they're in a terrible condition, but it's their home and they're older now, their health is poor. They can't maintain it physically, they can't maintain it financially. How, how do we help them? You know, I can de-deal them, throw them out of the street, but that's not what anybody wants. I don't want that. I can convict them of property maintenance violations and put them in jail. That doesn't help anybody. So, you know, one of the things that a vacant building registration does is it does generate revenue. It does pass those costs back to the people that, that own those properties and gives the city then an avenue to generate, uh, an ability to help people that need our help. The one original, with respect to vacant building ordinances that I posted online the other day, uh, looked at Youngstown in, obviously a much bigger town, but their vacant building ordinance generated almost eight hundred thousand dollars. We're not going to do that, but we have a number of buildings. I mean, I know, I can think of probably five or six buildings right off the top of my head that were vacant thirty, forty years ago when I moved out of town and they're still vacant today. And, and the community suffers that burden.
Two questions that I want to pass on to you that I've had brought to me, uh, just to throw out for discussion. One was from a, a rental property owner. Is there a reason or a wrong decision between a rental and an owner-occupied? You know, like you mentioned, looking through a window to know how a building is laid out. Is there a reason that we stress more importance on it if it's a rental versus a owner-occupied in those instances?
I, I don't know that we do. The vacant building ordinance distinguishes between commercial and residential property, but not between rental and owner-occupied properties. It's, it's solely about unoccupied properties, frankly. The property maintenance code similarly has, um, uh, no distinction between rental, residential, uh, only in liability. I will say that, um, and I get it, you know, we, we've adopted the International Property Maintenance Code and I, no matter who I talk to, what we talk to, as soon as I say international, I lose them. You know, everyone checks out at that point forward. So I, I, there is in part of your materials, a simplified property maintenance code that, um, tries to get rid of some of that, extray stuff that's in the International Property Maintenance Code. There is, that, that I can see goes into excruciating detail and the things that we've talked about here before are the, you know, windows that may or may not open and how many old houses have windows that don't open right. The, uh, so it kind of simplifies it, gets it down into something that's more tailored for towns our size and it's, it's a novel of, of what other towns are doing similarly, you know, to try to use like in that accuracy.
And my other question, I just lost my train of thought, but Mr. Wireman, I do, is you that posed the question. Do you remember potentially what question do you ask when we were having this discussion a few years ago?
Well, I should say, just in my mind, a minute ago. Well, my question was, can we, can we deny them water if they're? I mean, I think that's a tool we have, you know, I mean, and, and I know it sounds cruel, but if this house is not in repair, whether it's, if it's, if, if it's the, the property owner's and he's renting it, he's not going to be able to rent it if he can't get water, you know.
I, I would say the lack of, yeah.
Well, I know they do, but.
I would say a lack of water service is one of the, one of the things that we look at before we decide to condemn or, or even evidence of a vacant structure. There are a number of houses where there are people living without water as we speak.
I think one of the things he's getting alluded to is that if we've got a property that the owner isn't taking care of it and they're renting it out into a horrible condition, do we have the ability to deny water service?
I think you want to be careful, uh, there, there's, there's two different levels. There are condemned and there are just violations. And a property that is condemned, yes, we, we do, water is turned off and, and we would not necessarily turn water back on until such times as the property is barred into compliance or revoked. Properties that just have violations are, are different. Those are ones where we're working with the other, even if it's, even if there's significant violations and, you know, we're citing, we're at the stage where you have to cite them, it doesn't necessarily impact the habitability of the house only that there are structural or cosmetic issues.
I was just going to point that out, but that's in the notes from November twenty-sixth, meaning that you couldn't shut off utilities unless it was condemned.
And then I think the other thing I had was, uh, and I've seen this, you had given us some, like, homes that were on, on our radar several times, it was a couple of years ago. And I know that the one particular home I'm taking out was on, uh, East Mansfield Street and it was on the list and all of a sudden it got sold and it may be in better shape now. I don't know, it's one of those, that might be underpass there. But, uh, I know it got sold and they put a new door on the front and I think that's about, still, it still looks pretty bad, but it may be.
I have to look at specifically, I, I'm not sure of that. We do have a provision in our ordinance that once a property is being condemned, that it cannot be sold. That is somewhat problematic in situations where the, the house is in foreclosure or bankruptcy proceeding and is being sold at auction and essentially being bought back by the bank. It's a clearance process for, for means. We can't really enforce against those, uh, and it's ultimately it's to our benefit that, that the bank take it and try to do something with it, although it creates a whole different level of problems. Houses that are condemned are, there is a prohibition in our code against that and we're working with property owners on a property not too far from here right now that suffered some fire damage and was transferred impermissibly. But we're hoping that, that rectifies itself, that repairs are being made.
The, the last one is, can we put like a mechanics lien on, on property? So when it is sold, they have to satisfy that lien?
Yes, yes. And, and we do that when we do assessments, much like the mowing, um, and those types of assessments. We can apply those to the, uh, to the property, to the property taxes. Problem we have is when these properties sell at share sale, if they sell at share sale, they're going to sell for pennies on the dollar and, you know, we get, may get something back. If they don't sell at share sale, then they go to like a, a secondary auction process and oftentimes with those, they'll sell for a dollar. And so we don't, we don't get any, you know, we get our percentage of that dollar. So we don't, we don't really recover.
So if, if you have a mechanics lien on a property, say you put a new furnace in and then you were never paid for it as, as a contract, you can put a mechanics lien on property.
Yeah, we do an assessment, it's a little bit different.
And, and that house sells for five hundred dollars. How can they transfer the title if that lien hasn't been satisfied? My question.
The house could not sell in that situation, but it could sell at a share sale.
At a share sale, then the.
Yeah, then it wipes out.
The lees are wiped out.
Yeah, one owner to the other, it, it shouldn't sell. But again, that gets to, that goes back to the rental property. It's kind of all these things already tie together. I, I know of two or three houses where it's, it was sold on land contract and then the person that bought it on land contract sold it on land contract to somebody else who's now renting it to a fourth party and none of those are recorded and none of those are written. And we started last year, I believe, or maybe it's been a little bit longer than that, requiring leases before we turn on water, because, you know, that was one thing we were trying to do. Yeah, because we, you know, so many landlords didn't even know necessarily who was turning on water in, you know, in, in their, in their properties because it would turn on in someone else's name. So that was a problem.
How is your process going with revising the maintenance code?
I have a, a version in here.
Is that already revised?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
We were going back in November, you were going to do that this year. I was, you know, I'm sure that was not already.
Yeah, there's, uh, it's labeled in here, it's section thirteen thirteen and thirteen fifteen is a, it's the one with blue headers.
Are they not colored?
Oh. It's one of the first things and it's, there's three sections to it.
It's on the front page.
It's the first thing in the pack.
Yeah. There, there's, there's four sections to it. There's a property code, there is a dangerous building code, which is, um, you know, for when you actually have to demolish. There is the rental property code and rental registration code. Those are, you know, secondary, um, but that's, that whole packet there is all, some of that stuff all kind of goes together.
It's one of the things I would like to figure out what the best way to accomplish this is. I'd like to be able to get input from some of our property owners. Whether we do that through an ad hoc committee to, to work through these and bring them back to us, whether we just, you know, take it to a couple of readings and allow them the opportunity to speak. I don't know if the, the best method is, but I want to make sure that we're hearing the concerns of, of the property owners, like I said, so we can address the ones that are creating violations, punishing the ones that are following. What would we do then? So I don't know what your thoughts are on that, what the best way to accomplish, you know.
I, I think it's a, I would ask that you target a broader group, not just property owners, but, uh, business owners in the community, what issues they have with rental properties. And we, we talked to someone last night that needs more employees, but their employees don't have a place to live. Business owners, what they need and, you know, the conditions of the properties that may be impacting their business. And, and I, I think there's a silent group that's a big portion of our, of our city that is occurred and that's tenants and, and some of the issues they're dealing with.
What if we had a whole silent meeting on this issue where we could advertise it, open up and let people come in and listen to what you have to say and then, uh, they'd like none of you heard?
Certainly.
I think that'd be a perfect, perfect solution to it. If, if, you know, when you're ready to start getting down to the nitty-gritty, then I, you know, to do all of this all at once is, is a monumental task. So you've, you've got to break it up into some smaller parts that are going to be addressed each time. But I think starting with public opinion and getting everybody in here and saying, this is the only thing that's going to be discussed. This is, uh, and you can do that through your committee, your committees. Your committee's able to call a special meeting to address that. I mean, we can do the public, you know, the publicity for it and we can do, get it out there to the public and when it is, we make it a point in time when it's easy for them to attend.
I was going to suggest maybe posting these, sending these Facebook page and so people who are interested have a chance to read over the proposed changes to the code, get the information out there. Also possibly, you know, within the proposed, you know, there's a few categories of changes here, maybe a proposed fee schedule rather than, you know, something that kind of breaks the fees out so, you know, as people are looking through it, they're aware of the fees that are kind of baked in if they don't read the entire document or if they're, you know, not one that's going to sit down and read an eight-page ordinance.
Read the E D V.
Some of the document and in addition.
How much time would you need to prepare such a meeting?
No, everything's here.
I'd like to at least look two plus weeks out to make sure that we can get the word out to people and let them, you know, have the ability to be here. So, I don't know if we want to look at schedules now or if we want to do that at a later time.
Are you talking about just doing like a special health and safety-
Yeah, I think what you said, it'd be more of a town hall structure. The committee will call the meetings.
The committees won't be meeting, it'll just-
Yeah, but allow people the opportunity to have some time to look through this ahead of time and then kind of answer questions.
Two weeks out puts us back to the city council.
How about three weeks?
There is a extra fifth week at the end of April, that might be a little far out, but we can do that next week, the fifth week at the end of April.
There are five Tuesdays there.
But we could do, you know, we could do like the ninth or go clear down to 23rd or 30th, if you want it on a Tuesday.
I want you to throw the dates at Bruce and see what he thinks and then we can-
Reacting and let Todd know.
I would just want to send out an email, pull all the dates to the committee, to the council members and just give a look at that, the 23rd or the 25th potential days.
I think that's a good move.
Do you want that part out?
Yeah, I think, I want to make sure, because the last thing we want is that, you know, we've been working on this for a while, you know, we don't need to pass a meeting and I think we want to make sure that people have the opportunity to have some input on it and I want to make sure we do it the right way.
I think that's- Hey, you think we could have a second, we could have a second public meeting then on the turn.
And we very likely.
Yeah.
I think we should.
Before you get to Kurt, I just wanted to, I actually had a half hour, 45 minute conversation last night before our property owners here in town about this specific topic and when it was first brought to our attention, how long ago that was when we first initially talked about this, he was infuriated by it and upset about it. Last night, he told me how much he would appreciate having something like this now after being into this burden.
I think if we do it the right way, I want to make sure it's beneficial.
Yeah.
What's the process for collecting like the vacant prop, vacant property registration? Do you just, you know, determine maybe that the property may be vacant and start sending invoices to who you think may be the property owner? And if those don't get paid, does that progress to property tax assessments or, you know, how does the city get, start getting that money? I didn't hear it explained.
I think that it remains to be seen yet, I think that's part of the plan that has yet to be created.
And some of that is addressed in the document.
Yeah.
So, I think getting the document out there will help get some answers on that. I mean, there are some things, there are some concerns I had about just reading, I mean, just getting the information to people, you know, I know that it listed, you know, through the newspaper. I don't know if everybody's going to get that information if we're just using the newspaper and, you know, how do you track down every single rental house when there's no registry of rental houses? It's a challenge and, you know, the newspaper, the local newspaper, for somebody who owns a rental house in Gusiris, but they live in Tippin, they're probably not getting a telegraph form, so they're not going to get that note, know that that notice is out there.
I would also note that, especially with respect to the vacant building ordinances, there are, we're definitely not the first and actually we're going to be closer towards to the last of the people that have adopted these. There are, there's many of these that you want to read from every city and every state all over the country, so, I mean, you can go online and find hundreds of these where you can, you know, see how they have their setup and there's, in fact, it's to the point now where there's professional companies that come in and put these together for towns and-
I would say we want to engineer backwards, we want to say, what's our intent, what's our goal? And then go backwards and say, how do we get there to make sure we do that properly and fairly? So, this is your view.
The question I have, may have to be answered this. If, let's say we do charge a fee for all rental, as in residential rental property, could we also be kind of like in habits so that it's public access so people can see, we can be like an advocate for the rental property owners to help rent out their properties as in just posting that these are rental properties and these are who you can contact?
Like contractor registration? Do we have a register? Do you have a list of contractors?
Yeah, I'm saying, we can use it towards, to help the rental landlords of the property so that sometimes it'll help save them from having to try to advertise, because a lot of times, you know, I've only seen signs out in the yard for, I don't see it advertised anywhere else and this might be another way that somebody can say, "Hey, I seen this property" and then they found out that so-and-so owns it and they can contact them with public information.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a very good example of experience somewhere.
That helps new people, new members of the community too, come to city, all look for information, so.
I'd say, you know, on the other hand, only if the property wants to be listed, maybe that might be.
Sure.
Well, I understand it, just on my view.
I have three questions. One is, how would I get a copy of this ahead of the town hall?
We have copies of all these and actually, Mr. Hill had some out to everybody, so we can make those available to all new tenants today.
The other question is, I don't know if it's a question, but, you know, these fees are going to be paid for by the tenant because landlords can't afford to keep absorbing all the increased taxes and now they're going to throw fees on them. So, on my leases, it would have to say, each month there's a fee charged to the city and that's just raising their-
Do you think a $10 a year fee would be unreasonable?
Yeah, I don't think there should be a fee.
Okay.
The other thing is-
But if someone, if a landlord couldn't afford the $10 fee for registering the property, then how, you know, how does that indicate that landlord's ability to maintain that building?
You're looking at it all wrong. It's not whether we can afford it, it's what's right and what's wrong. You decide, you've got to flop a fee on the landlords, that's your opinion, not my opinion. I'd say, "Don't, I've got enough expenses. I can afford it, I don't want to pay it." That's all there is to it. The other thing is, you mentioned international code and it scares everybody away. It don't scare, what it does do, if you don't go by the international code, it allows you to do what you want to do. International code ties your hands a little bit because in the beginning, if you recall, and I know you do, you started out with international code and right away, you guys weren't following international code. The next meeting, international code's out the window. So, I disagree with that too. If you're going to, first of all, I disagree with doing it, but number two is, international code should be looked at and you can have a code, but you shouldn't be able to ride anything that's in that international code because that actually makes it a nice legal protection for the tenant, the way I've read it.
You know, we have, we have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. We adopted the 2012 version, I think there's a new one now, I know there's a 15, it might have been an 18. We've adopted the 2012 version of the International Property Maintenance Code and that's the code that we work off of now for enforcement provisions.
But you just said that if you mention that, everybody gets all upset and shook.
They do. They do. I think that, I think that International Property Maintenance Code, first of all, has a lot of provisions in it that probably are overkill for our city and so it puts us in a position of what are we going to enforce, what are we not going to enforce? You know, we, for example, the Property Maintenance Code says you got to have, you got to have your house paid. We see how that played out, all right? So, there are a lot of provisions in that International Property Maintenance Code that, you know, that cover a lot of different things and so simplifying that down is something that's much more tailored for the types of problems and the unique economic structure that we have here in the city, I think could be beneficial to everyone and something that's a little more plain language as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. My understanding, reading the International Property Maintenance Code, is that the local governing bodies have the right and the authority to change what they feel is necessary in that code. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And that's essentially what we're doing, you know, pulling out the parts that we think are applicable to us and adopting those as our own code. And that's, that's a lot of what you see in the Property Maintenance Code that, you know, had put together here. Taylor's, what some other cities are doing and it pulls out the parts of that code that are the most problematic ones, you know, the trash and the rubbish and the, you know, dilapidated structures and the, you know, the holes and the roofs and things like that. Try to focus on those big ticket items.
Any other discussion at this point? Mr. Mancom.
Is the International Property Maintenance Code what gives us the authority to condemn properties?
No, there, well, there are multiple places that give authority to condemn properties. We have a non-state structures section in our SARS code. The state code has provisions for digging structures and then the IPNC does as well.
So, if we didn't have the International Property Maintenance Code, we could still condemn structures?
Yes.
Okay.
But keep in mind, there's a difference between condemning and just citing for violations. You know, there are violations that could be, that a property can have that are not worthy of condemning it, but are still problems.
The only reason I was asking is because I, I think I may have seen a situation where the International Property Maintenance Code may have been used to, in a situation that it shouldn't have been and on a, on a house that was actually pretty nice and I think maybe the city might have been harassing the property owner. I'd be worried that if we open up more doors to vacant building ordinances, that, I know whenever we pass these laws, that there's always good intentions, but sometimes I see abuses.
Well, I think that's one of the things I'm looking out for to make sure that we can have at the town hall meeting where people get the opportunity to come and listen and share their opinions. I think that's, that's one of the things I'm trying to be helpful with and I think that we'll do well with that.
All right.
With that, I will close health and safety at 7:04 PM.
We don't need to find out the date?
No.
Is that you continue?
I will continue. Is there any public participation? None, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So, Mr. McPhee first, Zach second, all in favor?
Aye.
Bless you, we are adjourned at 7:04 PM.
And that's how you adjourn a meeting.